Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the August 3, 2021 legislative session of the Wycomico County Council. This time we'd like to call the meeting to order with the opening prayer and the pledge of allegiance, and you're more than welcome to join us.
Our Father, who art in heaven, thou be then and thou come, and thou wilt be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and give us our trespasses, with those trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us healing, with Thy power and Thy glory forever. Amen.
To the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right before we get started, I'd like to let everyone know that there was an article in the Salisbury Independent that mentioned there would be a vote on the proposed tax credit program tonight, and that was a mistake, and I spoke with the editor, and he's going to correct that in his next article. But there will be a work session and no vote tonight. So Ms. Hurley, will you please read the items on the consent agenda?
Good evening, Council President, Council members, ladies and gentlemen. Before we begin, there is one change to the agenda, and that is the proclamation to Mr. Doug Osnell will be postponed to the next council meeting that will be held on August the 17th at 10:00 a.m. So there are eight items on the consent agenda. We have legislative minutes from July the 20th, 2021. We have open work session minutes from June the 15th, 2021 pertaining to the Wycomico County Board of Education quarterly work session. We have open work session minutes from June the 15th, 2021 on the zoning of certain large agricultural storage tanks. We have open work session minutes from June the 15th, 2021 on the environmental health operations and program successes. Open work session minutes from June the 15th pertaining to the update on broadband. Open work session minutes from June the 15th on the relocation of forest conservation easement located on lots 7 and 8, Woodbrook Drive in the Woodbrook Medical Center, as for G2 Properties LLC. And we have open work session minutes from July the 6th on the proposed zoning regulations for certain agricultural storage tanks, storage tanks, and then open work session minutes from July the 6th on the Airport Cares Act grant funding update.
We need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Got a motion? Do we have a second?
No.
Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Chair votes aye. The consent agenda passes unanimously. This time we have proclamations for law enforcement officers in recognition of their retirement, and I think the room is kind of full right now, and I'd like to recognize the sheriff and the chief deputy, Gary Baker, and Sheriff Lewis. But if I could get the deputies to kind of form a line beside us at the podium. Some of these people I've known for a long time, and then when they walked in, I didn't recognize them without their uniforms. And this guy behind me, he's too big. At this time, the Wycomico County Council offers these proclamations with great pleasure that the acting county executive and members of the Wycomico County Council extend a certificate of appreciation to all of the council members or all of the deputies that we're going to mention. There's too many to do each one of these at a time, so we're going to state that each of these at a time. The first one, is Jeremy Bushell here?
He's not.
I didn't see him. I didn't think so. But he has 21 years of service. Mike Bowers, is Mike Bowers here? No. Why does it make that quick? Sergeant Mike Carey?
He's not.
Let me try this again. Corporal Scott Hamilton. Where's Scott?
He is ready.
All right, buddy. So Corporal Scott Hamilton has 21 years of service, and with your dedication to the citizens of Wycomico County, Maryland, while ever striving to exercise professionalism, good judgment, and fairness, we thank you for your ability to anticipate the needs of your community and for the grace you extend to the acting county executive, the county council, staff, and citizens. Done this third day of August, 2021, signed by the acting county executive and all of the council members. So congratulations and... Next, the big man behind me, Deputy First Class Mike House, with 21 years of service. And also with your dedication to the citizens of Wycomico County, while ever striving to exercise professionalism, good judgment, and fairness, we thank you for your ability to anticipate the needs of the community and your grace that you extended to the acting county executive, the council, the staff, and the citizens. Done this third day of August, 2021, signed by the acting county executive and all of the county council members. Next, do we have Deputy First Class Darren Johnson?
No.
He's not here. All right. Corporal Jeff Rantz. Hey, buddy. You can stand right here if you want. So this certificate of appreciation is for Corporal Jeff Rantz for his 25 years of service. I'm not going to read everything, but on this third day of August, signed by the acting county executive and all of the county council members. So thank you. Babe, where'd Babe go? Come on up here, big guy. Captain Babe Wilson, 31 years. I'm not even 31, but I don't know how I've known you.
Didn't take him long to stop saying that.
But Babe, you're 31 years of service, and you're retiring as a captain, so on this third day of August, we commend you. Signed by the acting county executive and all of the county council members. Thanks. Thank you. And next, Deputy First Class Bob Wilson.
Come on up here, young man.
Bob Wilson, Deputy First Class, has 21 years of service to Wycomico County. We also want to thank you, and on this third day of August, 2021, we sign this, the acting county executive, John Soto, and all of the county council members. So thank you for your service. Last but not least, we have Sam Workman here. Come on up here, young man. I was asked to do this, I want to say about two years ago. It's been a while.
Been a while.
Then COVID hit, and so I'm glad we got you here today. So with your 21 years of service, I want to thank you as well.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much.
And again, this is signed by the acting county executive and all of the county council members. So thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
What happened to Sam?
He's the number one on the list, actually, for the council.
I thought we just read it.
Yeah. Deputy First Class Shane Baker, number one on the list.
Do we have it?
We have it.
Is this it? Is there somewhere?
Is that it?
That's not it.
That's not it.
I thought I'd signed one for Sam.
Are there a couple that you have over there?
It made a good stuck to another one?
Maybe it's back on the table.
I may have it. It stuck to this. Deputy First Class Shane Baker. There you go. I pray we didn't forget you, but this is something else. Thank you.
You've got to keep working, Shane.
Take a look at him. He's got 25 years of service. Is this correct?
Yeah.
Does he even look 25?
He started when he was 14.
Damn. 25 years of service. Thank you very much. Here you go. Does anyone want to give a speech?
We got it. Now's your opportunity.
I'll just say for me, I want to thank everybody for having us. What an opportunity for this office over the years, the last three decades. I know with the chief and several of you have been part of the process for us to get to this moment, and there's some hard shoes to fill with this group here, I'm going to tell you. It's been an honor to be a part of the experiences and the memories, and certainly I look forward to the future with Sheriff Lewis and recognition for Sheriff Nellens in the beginning for what he started for. So again, I really appreciate the opportunity, and thank you so much for the recognition. Chair?
I'm good.
All right. Thank you all. That's a lot of years of service there and a lot of good people. We hate to see them go.
Lots of people leaving.
Next, we have a proclamation to recognize the month of August as academic preparation month for Ms. Amanda Hopkins, president of the NAACP. Does anybody want to do this? Josh, you want to do it? Anybody?
This is the Costa Hospice one. Who's doing this one?
Okay, we have a proclamation here, which states, whereas earning a diploma from high school is one of the most cherished things a person can experience in life and one of the greatest achievements, whereas attending school daily and having the support of parents achieves this goal and is the best approach to reduce the dropout rates in the school system and to show children that they are truly cared for and supported. Whereas by encouraging students to remain in school, to learn, to help students understand the importance of the following directions, honoring rules, and as life skills, mentoring each children to learn the value of self-respect and respect for others is essential to their lives. Whereas the clearest path for a child to become a productive, responsible citizen is support and encouragement to stay in school, stay out of trouble, and get good grades. By doing this and receiving a high school diploma, the foundation of which we build a productive life may be realized by the students, and we'll see their dreams come true. Now therefore, be it resolved by the acting county executive and the entire Wycomico County Council, that August 20, 2021, is hereby reclaimed academic preparation month. The acting county executive and the county council encourage all citizens and parents to inspire our children to be successful citizens. Done this day, the third day of August, signed by the county executive and all members of the county council.
Thank you. I am new to this. I was thinking that everyone that was here just came here to see me, and then they just walked out right before I... So proclamation in itself, just the definition, means just to make an important announcement. There's nothing more important in education. Unfortunately, this past year, year and a half, has really been difficult for many of us just as adults, let alone our kids, our students. And I think what's going to happen is we can no longer just do a checkmark for just giving students some books and some tablets and some pencils. Their needs are greater now. So there's mental health issues, there are concerns with the parents, there's concern gang activities now in the schools, and there's just a plethora of other issues. So what Wycomico County NAACP wants to do is just take this up another notch. It's not just about the black kid, it's not just about the white kid, it's not just about the Mexican kid, it's about all students, because everyone's important. And I'm hoping that under this new leadership, me being the president, that we start just looking outside the box at the needs of every citizen, because we're concerned about everyone. What affects one of us affects all of us. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. It's honored to offer this proclamation every year, and thank you, Councilwoman Hastings, for offering it for us. Ms. Hurley?
The first item on the agenda this evening is a public hearing on Resolution Number 83-2021. You'll notice that Resolution 83-2021 and Resolution Number 84-21 are for the same projects, which are for Cove Road and Roing Point. The first Resolution 83-2021 is to amend the capital budget in the CIP, to add the funding for these projects, which requires a public hearing. And then Resolution 84-2021 is to accept the funding for the projects into the county's financial system. I just wanted to make sure that you guys were aware of the distinction between the two resolutions. So Resolution Number 83-2021 is to amend the fiscal year 2022 capital budget and fiscal year 2022-2026 capital improvement plan to increase the cost of projects known as shoreline restoration projects, Cove Road and Roing Point, and to increase loan funding for the projects from the Maryland Department of Natural Resources loans in the amount of $179,460, for a total amount of $280,155 for Cove Road, and in the increased amount of $180,180, for a total amount of $389,660 for Roing Point. And we have Mr. Steve Miller here, Director of Recreation, Parks, and Tourism.
Okay, this time we're going to open the floor to a public hearing for this resolution, Resolution Number 83-2021. Is there anyone that has anything to say or discuss on this resolution? Any comments? All right. I need a motion to approve Resolution Number 83-2021.
So moved.
Got a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion, council? Any discussion? All in favor of Resolution Number 83-2021, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Chair votes aye. Resolution Number 83-2021 passes unanimously. This time we need a motion to approve Resolution Number 84-2021. Got a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor of Resolution Number 84-2021, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Chair votes aye. Resolution Number 84-2021 passes unanimously. Ms. Hurley?
Next for your consideration is Resolution Number 85-2021. This is authorizing the acting county executive to accept a grant award in the amount of $1,345,554 from the Federal Aviation Administration through the American Rescue Plan to be utilized for costs related to operations, personnel, cleaning, sanitation, janitorial services, combating the spread of pathogens at the airport, and debt service payments. And we have Mr. Chris Davidson here, Assistant Airport Manager. If there are any questions.
Need a motion to approve Resolution Number 85-2021.
So moved.
Got a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Is there any discussion? All in favor of Resolution Number 85-2021, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Chair votes aye. Resolution Number 85-2021 passes unanimously. Ms. Hurley?
The next item for business is Resolution Number 86-2021. This is authorizing the acting county executive to accept a special grant award in the amount of $70,495 from the Maryland Aviation Administration to be utilized for acquisition of aircraft, rescue, and firefighting vehicle ancillary equipment. This grant does require a 25% local match in the amount of $23,498.41 from the airport's fiscal year '22 budget.
Need a motion to approve Resolution Number 86-2021.
So moved.
Got a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? I just have one question. Just curious, what is the ancillary equipment?
Ancillary equipment, SBCA's, Hearst Tools, and other...
SCBA's?
Yes, sir. ARF fighting equipment for the new vehicle.
Okay, because I thought that was a small amount compared to the cost of the ARF truck.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Any more discussion? All in favor of Resolution Number 86-2021, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Chair votes aye. Resolution Number 86-2021 passes unanimously. Ms. Hurley? Thank you.
Next is Resolution Number 87-2021. This is authorizing Motorola Solutions as a sole-source vendor to provide support for the Wycomico County Department of Emergency Services Radio Division for the fiscal year 2022. This resolution does require a supermajority vote in favor and for it to pass.
Right, need a motion to approve Resolution Number 87-2021.
So moved.
And do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any discussion?
I got a question.
Are they located here now, Motorola?
Yes.
Are they still in industrial park?
Okay. Because I know we had our bus radios, we had to wait for a guy to come out of Baltimore to service them.
Can you come up to the mic, Bill?
Now?
Either one of them.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Evening. Yes, we take care of all the bus radios now, Mr. Davis?
Yeah, because I know one time, I mean, about two years ago, we had to wait for some guy to come out of Baltimore.
Yeah, they're still here, but they're not doing radios. It's all, all the radios are on our system now, and we maintain them.
Okay. For the record, can you introduce yourselves?
Yes, I'm Bill Nutter, radio systems manager for Wycomico County.
Nicholas Rice, purchasing agent for Wycomico County.
And what radios do you handle? For which departments?
Oh, the only department in Wycomico County that is not on our system now is the Civic Center.
Is the Civic Center?
All other radios, yes.
So you do the schools?
Yes.
All right.
It's 2,516 radios total.
That's a lot.
Mm-hmm.
Any more questions? More discussion?
What happens when they all talk at one time?
Cut each other out.
No, our system is robust enough, we don't have any issues.
Most of them are on different frequencies, anyway. Any more questions? All right. All in favor of Resolution Number 87-2021, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Chair votes aye. Resolution Number 87-2021 passes unanimously. Thank you very much, guys.
Thank you.
Ms. Hurley?
Next for your consideration is Resolution Number 88-2021. This is authorizing Tix.com as a sole-source vendor to provide software and support for the Wycomico Youth and Civic Centers' online ticket processing software for the fiscal year 2022, and this resolution also requires a supermajority vote in order for it to pass.
All right, need a motion to approve Resolution Number 87-2021.
So moved.
Have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second. Any discussion? Any discussion?
I'd like to, I'd like to compliment and commend Nick for your recent promotion, your certification that you've just received.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Appreciate that.
Any more discussion? I'm just curious, the last concert we had, somebody was complaining about the fees. What kind of fees are we attaching to these tickets?
I'll let Katie from the Civic Center elaborate on that.
Katie Rouse, Deputy Director, Wycomico County Recreation, Parks, and Tourism. So the fees that we get charged from Tix have not changed since we started with them, so we have not changed our fees. The fees are calculated on a per-show basis, based on the cost of the ticket. It includes the charter-mandated capital restoration fee, as well as some user fees that cover the costs that we pay Tix. So we last looked at the customer fees in 2017, and we were very much below local, other local places, OC, Convention Center, Verizon Center. Our customer fees that we charge to the customer are much lower than theirs, and we have not changed them since then.
Okay, thank you. Any more questions or comment, discussion? Mr. Hastings?
Here's why I got you here. Are we scheduling concerts again, or is that...
We are.
All right.
I just saw something, some Christian guy?
Matthew West will be there Labor Day weekend, and then we have Paw Patrol on sale right now for November.
Paw Patrol?
Yes.
Okay. My kids aren't young enough to do that anymore, but I would have. Thank you. Any more questions or comments? All right. All in favor of Resolution Number 88-2021, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Chair votes aye. Resolution Number 88-2021 passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Hurley?
Resolution Number 89-2021. This is to make a supplemental appropriation from contingency to the Department of Finance in the amount of $1,622 for the Maryland Department of Agricultural Gypsy Moth Surveys. The cost of 200 gypsy moth surveys is $3,400, but the balance for that line item account is $1,778. So the county executive is requesting the $1,622 from contingency to pay for the full amount of the gypsy moth surveys.
Okay. Need a motion to approve Resolution Number 89-2021.
So moved.
Got a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any discussion?
Can I make one comment?
Yes, ma'am. Please introduce yourself.
I think Pam Olent, Director of Finance. This is actually going to the, it's actually going based on the account number. It's going to the gypsy moth department, not to the finance department. So the account number is right, the name of the department is off in the resolution. So I don't know if you need to...
Do we need to amend that? So I just realized that by reading the title.
I didn't, I missed that. I apologize. But I was like, wait a minute, it's not going to finance, it's going to Department 28, which is where we house the gypsy moths.
I'll make a motion that we amend the resolution to reflect the gypsy moth account.
Can we say the appropriate department name? Because I don't have it in front of me.
What is, I don't know what the appropriate department name is.
Neither do I, that's why I'm...
Gypsy moth account sounded good to me.
Are you looking it up, Ms. Hurley?
Yeah.
All right.
I apologize. I just, I was like, oh, wanted to let you guys know that.
Is that in the supporting documentation, or is that going to be in the budget?
It's going to be in the original budget. It's going to be in the budget. It's going to be the Department 28 as you go down. The title of the department is, I want to say it's Gypsy Moth, but I can't honestly remember for sure.
While you're looking that up, I know we do this every year, but what's the discrepancy?
So the state had received some additional information that there is potentially an outbreak at the moment, and so they want to do some additional aerial surveys. So we got a number back in February, and then they came to us and said, hey, by the way, we want to do some more. This would be your share. They may want to do some additional spraying, but we won't know that until they complete all the surveys, which will then happen probably in the spring. So again, this department is out of money. This will pay for the surveys, and then we'll have to see what they say that they want for the actual spraying aspect. But I didn't want to just put an amount in there and have too much, too little, whatever. So I were just putting in the amount to cover the surveys.
Okay. Did you find it, Ms. Hurley?
I believe it's gypsy moth control is what it was in last year's budget.
I had it connect, that's why I was...
Is that what the motion is for?
Yep.
Right, have a motion to amend, and do we have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any discussion? I don't think there's any discussion. Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, amendment passes.
Thank you.
Any discussion on the resolution?
As amended.
As amended. Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
I will say that I went out on a property recently, a farm in the forest, and actually in District 5, and walking through the woods, you could hear the, I forget the exact name of the, how do you say this? The excrement that comes from gypsy moths was raining down in the forest, and you could hear it nonstop, and it sounded like rain coming down, but it was bright and sunny, and I'm like, oh my gosh, this is a bad year.
In District 5, in District 5, we use a different name than that.
How did you figure out that's what it was?
I don't want to get into that. I remember the 1994 outbreak.
I'm just curious about that. It's interesting. All right. All in favor of amendment as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
The resolution.
Resolution Number 89-2021 as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Chair votes aye. Resolution Number 89-2021 passes unanimously as amended. Chair votes aye, resolution number eighty-nine dash twenty-two-one passes unanimously as amended.
Thank you.
Is that good, Ms. Harley?
Yes, yes. Next for your consideration is resolution number ninety dash twenty-two-one. This is confirming the appointment of Rebecca Webster as Director of Wycomico County Local Management Board, also known as the Wycomico Partnership for Families and Children.
Right, need a motion to approve, resolution number ninety dash twenty-two-one.
To move.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Resolution number ninety dash twenty-two-one passes unanimously. Ms. Webster, would you like to say something?
Thank you.
Thank you, welcome. All right, thank you very much again. Mr. Mitchell?
Yes, this is what's generally called a parameters bill to permit borrowing. It authorizes the county to borrow the full faith and credit the county, if some not to exceed $51,97,421, to evidence such borrowing by sale. From time to time, one or more serious general obligation bonds, to finance, refinance, reimburse the costs of certain projects for the Sheriff's Department, General Services, Wycomico County Community College Department, I'm sorry, Warwick Community College, the Board of Education, Airport Solid Waste, including costs of planning, design, acquisition, construction, improvement, installation, renovation, rehabilitation, repairing, furnishing, equipping of land, facilities, buildings, and structures, together with the cost of financing, the issuance of sale, general obligation financing. It authorizes refunding bonds not to exceed 100% of the aggregate principal, exempting from such bonds and refunding bonds from the provisions of Sections nineteen dash two oh five and two oh six of the Local Government Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland, authorizing the issuance of obligation anticipation notes, again, not to exceed $51,97,427 prior to an anticipation of sale of any bonds, in order to finance, refinance, reimburse costs of such projects in the interim. Authorizes the County Council to pass by resolutions, prior to issuing all or any part of the bonds, refunding bonds anticipation notes, in order to fix, prescribe, or determine, provide the details of such obligations, and to pledge and authorize annual appropriations to pay the principal and interest on said obligations, and the levying of taxes to meet the appropriations, subject however to lawful limitations of the county's taxing power set forth in the Charter. The actual bill is quite a bit longer than that, but that is a.
It was kind of long.
Oh, yeah, but that's, that's the title which is generally accepted as a fair statement.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Need a motion to introduce legislative bill twenty, twenty-two-one dash oh-three.
So moved.
Got a motion, and who made the second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion?
Yeah, I've got some questions.
Mr. Holloway?
A few weeks ago, we raised the fees for the landfill, and part of that conversation went, is we have to raise these fees because we have cell construction to look forward to, and other maintenance items at the landfill. And I do see that we have landfill cell construction in this bond bill. Why, why do we use both excuses here, I guess is a good way to put it?
We're actually only borrowing half of the cost, we are going to use fund balance to pay half the cost of the cell construction. The other half is going to be paid by debt, because we don't have enough saved up fund balance to be able to do the whole thing out of basically our savings account. And thus, the increased fees will be able to help pay the debt service that we are going to have to do to pay the second half of the construction.
So we don't have enough money in the landfill construction to do the, what is, what is the cost? Seven million, you're saying it's six and, three and a half million here that we're borrowing, so.
Correct, it's over seven, it's over $7 million. We do not have enough fund balance to do $7 million out of fund balance. And so, the increased fees is going to help maintain some of the fund balance, because you have to have fund balance, it's an enterprise fund, and pay the increased debt service, because the debt service will come out of the landfill, it will not come out of the general fund.
What is the, what is our fund balance at the landfill?
Did not bring my audit with me.
Okay, that's fine, you can get back to me on that. Well, I'll finish, but, you know, looking down all of these, all of these items on here are needed, no doubt. However, it should be known, this is probably the largest bonding we've ever done.
And.
Over twice now, we didn't go to the past couple of years, I realize that, but we don't know what the interest rates is going to be yet.
Our financial advisors, things are still looking remarkably good, that's part of the reason to move now, so that, I mean, there is a long process to be able to do this, and we'll be coming back to council, there'll be the second reading of this, but then we have to wait the sixty days for this to pass, to then allow us to solicit bids, and we'll close on this, council will probably get a resolution on those costs in December, November, December timeframe is the current schedule. Yes, we have been kind of, we, we let council know back in the fall last year, this was going to be a big number, we showed it to you during the CIP process, we showed it during the budget as well. We're well aware this is a large number, we have kind of told all of the departments that, you know, this year is big, we're going to have to watch what we do in the future, because this is, this is finishing out some major projects that we need for the Board of Education, for Warwick, and obviously the Public Safety Building.
Well, like I say, $51 million, I think what's the largest we ever had was like 29 or 24, or something like that, and most of the years it's been 10 or 12. And I think as we, and I'll skirt over this issue real quick, as we look at starting, starting to give in tax abatements to developers, we should look at what we're having to borrow money to keep the county going. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more discussion? Questions, comments? All right, all right, with this said, all in favor introducing legislative bill twenty-two-one dash oh-three, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Chair votes aye, legislative bill twenty-two-one oh-three passes unanimously for the introduction. Ms. Harley, do we have a date?
Yes, we can have that public hearing on September the seventh at 6:00 P.M.
September seventh at 6:00 P.M. Okay. All right. At this time, we're going to open the floor to public comments, please limit all public comments to three minutes or less, any presented material may be submitted to the council members. If you do so, please include ten copies, no derogatory remarks, personal attacks, obscene language, or disruptive behavior. Do we have any public comments? If we have any, please go to the podium and state your county of residence.
Good evening, my name's John Palmer, and I live in Delmar, Maryland. And tonight, I'm just here to speak a few words about our Horizon project, which we, which you all will be discussing at a work session in the coming weeks. And I guess I would like to direct my comments to some of the investors in this project. And I don't know how you all go about investing, but when I want to invest in something, I look way back into the past to see what's been going on with my investments. And then I always listen to the good words that the investor is going to give me, because it's a no lose situation. And then I do research on my own, and look to see what, what's really going on, or what I feel is really going on. When I look back at this project, I think it might have started around 2017, I believe they had a completion date of the Ross part of the project is August 21 this year. I think that building was supposed to have been complete now. If I was invested in it, I would probably be looking somewhere else for an investment, but again, that'll be all up to the investors. But I would like to say this to the investors, I would bet that if I gave each member of the county council a piece of paper, and asked them to compare and contrast the pros and cons on these projects, about how it's going to be good for the county, I would come up with seven different or very interesting pieces of paper. I don't think, I don't know fully what the project is myself. I hope before you all vote on it, you get a good understanding of what it is, because I don't think that understanding is there right now. Of course, that's just a personal opinion. The opposition has done a great job getting people up here to testify, but then again, investors, I want you to remember that these are a group of people that, who are invested in this project. If this project goes ahead, they hope to win, and I want to see them win, because I want to see businesses do good. But I also encourage investors to look into these types of projects for themselves. Don't just take the good things that's coming out into perspective, and it's going to be great, everything is great. Don't just listen to that, do some investigation on your own, and you'll probably find out that there's a whole bunch of projects very similar to this that have not been successful, and has been bad for the counties and municipalities that, that they've been done in. I understand that in the enabling legislation for this, that the council has a chance to do some, some of their own criteria to insert into the resolution that you will be voting on in a, in a couple of weeks. I encourage you to, to do that. There are some things that could be put in there that would be good for the county, and I can give you a personal list, but in fact, I think I will, I'll email it to, to you. Laura, I'll email it to you, and you can distribute it. And I would encourage you to put these, some of these in there, and see what you think of them, and it's only for protection of the citizens of, of this county. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer. Do you have any more public comments?
My name is Sandra Spedden, and I live in the county, just out, just inside the county, not Salisbury. But I've been very concerned also about this Horizon project, and I've tried to get to these meetings, but I did have triple bypass surgery a few months ago, and I'm still dealing with that. But I tried to make an effort to come tonight, because I feel, from everything I've learned about it, I'm sure John knows probably a lot more than I do, but from everything I have seen, it is not a good thing to give special privileges to certain developers. That is not fair to the other people here in Wycomico County, to other developers who may have, who may be wanting to do the same thing and not have to pay any taxes either. And I believe that if this passes, that what's going to happen is the people of Wycomico County are going to have their taxes raised. It seems like all we seem to want to do today is just to spend money, spend money, spend money. And at seventy-eight, I'm sick and tired of hearing people that say, let's spend money, well, let's try conserving a little, I think. And I would urge the council here to vote against the Horizon bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Spedden. Do we have any more public comments? Any more public comments? Oh, yes, ma'am.
I apologize for us being late, so we didn't hear all your conversation earlier, but we are property owners in Wycomico County, we own a business, and we just don't feel that giving a tax break is going to help the county at all. My, my mother's selling her house on Cardinal Drive, the road is falling apart on my way to her house, you can't even see over the bridge on Johnson Road, because the trees haven't been cut. So I just really feel the tax dollars need to be used more appropriately, and we shouldn't be given a tax break.
Thank you, can you leave your name for the record?
Tammy Atkins.
Tammy Atkins, thank you. Any more public comments? All right, no more public comments, moving on to council comments. Do we have council comments? Ms. Ackley, you look like you're ready.
I wanted to thank Ms. Hopkins for coming, and thank you for your leadership and your, your really reflective words. I also wanted to welcome Ms. Webster, as a new addition to Wycomico County. Thanks.
All right, any more council comments? Ms. Holloway?
The Independent did misquote when we were having, I know you brought that out at the beginning of the meeting, but a lot of folks weren't in the, in the meeting at the time. They said that we were going to have a public hearing and vote on the Horizon project tonight. That was incorrect, and it'll be at our second meeting, which is what, the fifteenth?
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth of August.
August seventeenth.
Yeah, and so there will be a public hearing there, at that date, and people will be welcome to come and speak about the Horizon project, and then.
It's at 10:00 A.M.
At 10:00 A.M. in the daytime, thank you.
Thank you, any more council comments? All right, last call. All right, that's it on council comments. For the President, I'd like to thank everyone for showing up today, it was a great turnout seeing all the deputies that retired, it's a lot of years of service there, and I don't think we can thank them enough for their service. And Sheriff Lewis, I know you, and Deputy Chief Baker, the chief deputy or deputy chief? Chief Deputy Baker have served the county for a long time, so thank you all for your service too. And for everyone that came to speak out today, thank you, and welcome, Ms. Webster. Had the opportunity to work with you at the Tri-County Council, and I have the opportunity to work for you here, or work with you here, so thank you. Moving on, I need a motion and a second to adjourn from legislative session and go into open work sessions, followed by closed work sessions pursuant to the general provisions article of Section three dash three oh five B one eight as follows, "To discuss a personnel matter pertaining to the sheriff's office to protect the confidentiality of the individual, to discuss, two, to discuss potential litigation of impervious surface areas to protect the county's legal position." Need a motion and a second.
So moved.
Got a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, now we're going to go into open work session. This is the proposed multifamily residential development property tax credit for legislative bill twenty-two-one dash oh-two. Mr. Mitchell, can you discuss your position on this?
Well, actually, I don't have a position so much as I was, sorry, I've lost my glasses somewhere. I was responding to some questions. As I saw it, the use of appraisals to set the price are not permitted under the Enabling Act from the state government. I, I thought from the way the motion, the amendment had been offered, that it was an attempt to respond to some questions that have been raised, both by Counselor McCain, and also in a public comment by, I think it was Brett Davis some time before, about the situation where you come in thinking you're going to build a 10 or 11 million dollar project, and after it's finished, it's assessed at something less. Assessments are frequently below fair market value, it's pretty well known. So I just suggested a way it could be done, it's a little convoluted, but the idea was, if you were to, if you were to set the threshold instead of a 10 million, say at nine, and that's just, I'm just picking that as an example, but set the criteria to qualify that you had to have either a 10 million dollar assessment or a 10 million dollar appraisal. It would let a developer know somewhat in advance from a pre-construction appraisal, that the project probably will qualify, but not catch them short when all their financing may be based upon the idea that they're going to get the tax credit if they come up a little bit short. But of course, that's only if the county is willing to take a project that has a lower assessment. To the extent that they're getting the, the credit upfront, the first few years, it doesn't make a big difference to the county, they're, they're not collecting that money anyway. But it's, it's totally up to the council whether they think that's appropriate to drive down to a smaller, a smaller threshold or, or not, or whether you even want to, you know, address even smaller projects if you think they're going to be successful. But that's, that's not my call, I was just saying, you cannot, you cannot use the assessment, the appraisal in place of the assessment.
Yeah, and just to expound.
Yeah, and just to expand on that a little bit, and based on Mr. Mitchell's legal rendering, it's because the state enabling legislation used the term, the increase in value has to be based on the assessment. And so based on that, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Mitchell, but you're, based, you're saying it doesn't matter if we were trying to add an appraisal option or whether we were trying to add a cost investment option, any other options, at this point in time, we wouldn't be able to do because of the way the language is crafted in the state enabling legislation because it references the increase has to be based on the assessment.
Right, and it doesn't give any other op-
Doesn't give you an option.
It does however, it doesn't set it at 10 million. It just says it has to be a substantial increase in the-
Assessment.
Assess value. So it depends on what the council sets as a substantial increase. I know that's been discussed quite a bit.
I'm sure, you know, once this project, if it gets approved, gets approved, it will have plenty of opportunities in the future for people coming in wanting tax abatements for a lot less than $10 million and it'll be up to the council at that time whether they want to do that. But this one project will set, set the tone and set a precedent for what happens in the future. And so I think the council, if they approve this, will get plenty of opportunity to change the amounts in any amount to any figure that they want to, so.
Yeah.
In fact, the legislation actually would, as introduced to the council, would require a review in three years if that was the idea.
Yeah, it sounds to me, trying to make this simple, but I think at the 17th meeting, we would just need to rescind the amendment that was made because essentially we can't do it, so, which is, leaves us with the legislation as introduced.
Well, it was introduced with the amendment, so, but once you rescind that amendment, then it goes back to the original form of the bill-
Right.
-as presented, yeah.
So what do we have to do during this work session with it? Nothing?
You can discuss whatever amendments you would like to make, you can discuss the bill in general, but you can't do any formal motions in the work session.
So where we left off was discussing the amendment. If anyone has anything to say from this point on?
I'd just like to thank Mr. Mitchell for picking up on that-
Mm-hmm.
...and helping us with that. That's, really do appreciate that.
Thank you. Ms. Holloway.
I've got a couple of things to discuss that possibly we could put into amendments for next meeting to give Mr. Mitchell a chance to check into it. We don't kind of, we kind of jumped the gun on the last one, I guess, not really realizing that we weren't allowed to do that. One amendment would be, I know they keep saying this is for student housing and I keep hearing concerns from citizens that if it doesn't work out for student housing, what is it going to, what is it going to be? Is it going to be, you know, housing, you know, for anybody? I know that they keep saying there's no going, not going to be any impact on the schools with this project because it's going to be students, for college students, not high school students, of course, well, maybe not anyway. But anyway, so I think one amendment we could put in that would probably make sense is that this, amend this to, this tax credit if passed would only be for college students and that's only, the only people that could live in that, that could live in that building as long as the tax break was given.
Would that, would that conflict with the fair housing?
Well, that's something Mr. Mitchell would have to-
That's something, you know, Mr. Mitchell's going to have to look into from a real estate perspective. I'm not sure if we can, us say who can live in, you know.
We can't tell them, I don't think it'll conflict. We can't tell them who can live there, but we can say who gets, who gets the tax abatement. And anybody can live there, but if, if it's not students, they wouldn't get the tax abatement.
Mr. Posoda and Mr. Wilbur, would you like to join us? Just in case we have a question for you and if you want to offer any input. When Mr. Day was here, last time we discussed this, I think I asked the question if it was going to be college students or not, and I don't know that we really got an answer who's going to be residing there. Is that, when I first remember the project, they said it was going to be luxury apartments and then not long after that, they said it was going to be student housing, so not sure what it's going to be at this point.
Okay, the legislation as it's drawn right now references hotel and multifamily residential-
Right.
-which certainly is a lot broader than students. So if you're going to narrow it down, we're going to change up our definitions here.
That's the state, that's our legislation. That's what I'm saying, we could amend it, you know, to make it only available for college students.
Right.
Because that's what they've been touting, that it was only college, college students that were going to live there.
If you knock that out, then hotels would probably go out of it completely.
Right.
And multifamily, well, you'd, you'd be limiting it to just student residential development.
Just for that one project? Or all projects?
All projects.
All projects, okay.
This is legislation that applies-
To the Horizons, I think.
You know, all inside the red line.
Yeah, okay.
So if, so it says multi, multifamily, that means it's family unit, correct? That it cannot, that this would not apply to student housing?
Well, it could.
Okay.
I think students would fit within the multifamily definition.
Do we have, do we know who's going to administer, oversee, process?
Finance.
This, okay, because it's different than the city, so it's not like we can just piggyback off what the city does because our-
Finance department would do it just like they do other tax credits.
Okay. Is that, do we have to add any additional staff or is that something they can currently manage?
No.
Correct? We, we have that bandwidth.
Yeah, I don't think we need additional staff for that. Any more questions or comments?
Well-
Ms. Holloway.
I guess Mr. Mitchell will look into that, see if that's viable.
Yes, I will.
All right. The other thing, you know, I've heard a lot of concerns about who is involved in this and I think that we need to make an amendment to put in to the bill if it's passed that any investors, lenders and the owners would be made public. As long as the tax credit's given.
Do we know if any of the proposed projects are LLCs?
I, I don't know for certain, but typically you would put a project in an LLC or a corporation.
Usually you don't know who they are if it's an LLC.
Right, I mean, you can, you can find out from who the members are.
Okay.
You have to have a registered agent-
Right.
-as an LLC.
A lot of times that don't, old shoe is actually the players.
We could put that in the application.
Okay, all right.
The other one is, you know, they said they needed this to get off the ground and get it going. I think when the project, if the building is sold, that the tax credit should end.
The current legislation, does it include anything-
Yes.
-if it is sold?
Well, paragraph F is property tax credit granted by the section may be transferred to a purchaser of the property, so you'd be deleting that.
Right.
Okay.
The other question you might have on that is what you mean by sold. You can transfer it out if it's an LLC, you could sell the LLC, you could sell all the membership in the LLC without touching the deed, so.
Okay, well, we'll let you take care of that.
So we need to define that.
Yeah.
That's a good point.
That's why we have you at the end of the table, right?
Yeah. Any more questions?
I hate to call out Dave Ryan, but if, if you could maybe speak to some of the economic impact that we are going to have in the county. We spoke previously about the public school system, how that would look, if that would have any direct impact on the funding, the state's attorney's office. Have you had a chance to look into any of those things?
Of, of course she had to catch you while you were eating.
Too long a story, right?
Could you go to the podium and?
No, ma'am, I have, I've not looked in, Dave Ryan was Salisbury Wacomico Economic Development. I've not looked at the economic impact, of course. If people end up living there, you have two types of taxes. One is real property taxes and the other side of the coin would be income taxes depending on their residence, so whether they wash each other out, I don't know. It would depend on who lives there and, and those tax rates, so.
Other students, probably not a lot of income tax.
Pardon me?
If they're students, there's probably not much income tax.
Correct. Well, I don't know if there's a lot of grad students, yeah, I mean, so.
Has there been any, and this could be a question to you or Mr. Posoda, has there, has there been any, any research done on, on the impact services? What, what kind of impact this is going to have? I mean, we, we have this little website called Eastern Shore Undercover and it just seems like downtown Salisbury is overrun with fights and, on the weekends and see Mr. Baker sitting there. I'm sure you guys have to come in and help Salisbury all the time because I understand Salisbury is really down in manpower as you are now. I just, yeah, I see you guys, you know, these AW walk out of here tonight. You know, I keep hearing all the good things about this and, and we know it's, it's a good thing, okay, if the buildings are built, that's a great deal, but does the taxpayers need to subsidize it?
Thank you, Dave.
And, and especially subsidizing it when it's going to be taking our services. And it will take services. To think it's not going to take services is ludicrous. I mean, you don't build multi-million dollar buildings that don't take services. That's been proved already because the city gave them eight hundred, or $300 and some thousand dollars in free sewer hookups while they raised water and sewer on the rest of the citizens in Salisbury. Now, that's their business, that's not our, that's not this council's business, what the city does. They can give it all away if they want to. I look out for the citizens of Wacomico County and all of Wacomico County just because I'm from District 5. But if you're going to put a building up with 300 students in it or 300 people, we won't even say students, you know, we'll just say 300 people in it, and you don't address what the economic impact's going to have in reverse, you can say all the good things you want to about it, and I know, Dave, that's your job, saying the good things about things that come to town, but you've got to address also what this is going to cost the county. And I know people sit here and say, oh, it's not going to cost the county anything because of the revenue cap. Well, three years ago, the Greater Salisbury Committee and the Chamber of Commerce were trying to talk to council and into altering the revenue cap. So they're trying to talk to council and alter in the revenue cap so they could charge the citizens of Wacomico County more property taxes. That was three years ago, but now they're trying to give free property taxes to a certain group of people, so. It's my end of my spiel tonight, I'll talk later about it.
I'll just correct that last statement goes, sitting on the committee that did the study on the effects of the revenue cap over 20 years, they weren't trying to alter the revenue cap to increase taxes to the citizens. This is because of the lack of resources they were addressing, they were, and the study that was done by Beacon was simply looking at the, where have we been with the revenue cap, period.
Well, I was at that meeting also, probably, I wasn't at your board meeting, but I remember very clearly them saying we needed to alter the revenue cap in case we needed to raise taxes. And that was, that statement was made, I think it was to the fact, oh, in case we have a hurricane or a natural disaster, we need the ability to raise property taxes on the people of Wacomico County. Well, my answer to that was, so people's houses get blown down and you want to raise the property taxes, so.
We, we could go through the whole revenue cap part for next hour if you would, which doesn't protect our tax rate, by the way.
So Ryan, could you, could you see if you could pull some data on how, I'm assuming other county cities have done the same tax abatement, how it's impacted them or how they've had to plan accordingly for the next budget?
Oh, shoot.
Just something that's, some, if you can do something, I, I know you're-
For coming?
I know you're economic development, so you want it to sound good, but something a little bit more objective than the developers' economic impact, something that's more towards the county services.
Well, I think if you look at some of the numbers that are projected right now, the total projects are bringing in around $25,000. And even with the, with the 80% tax credit for the very first year, the estimation could be as much as 215,000, so figure out what that pays for services.
Is that from the developers?
That's from the projections that were, that were requested of the developers and that is based on the assessed values of the properties. Those are the projections based on assessed values of the property.
Yeah, the developers did this economic impact.
No, you're taking the values of the properties that are being proposed, you're taking what the assessed value is, what the 20% would be, and that's how you come up with that number. So it's 215,000 as opposed to what we know we're paying now, which is only 25,000 a year.
So for example, if each, so if each unit has three children, how's that going to impact our public school system if we're not collecting property tax on that? Or 80% property tax?
There are a minutia of scenarios that you could go through, but I think the bottom line is what we're looking at is do you want to bring in $25,000 a year for, you know, in perpetuity, or do you want to try to create an investment in developers who are, who are going to be bringing minimum of $10 million into this community? And if you look at what the assessments will be by the time you're done and the revenue for the county, the whole build out's going to be $913,000 a year that we could receive. And hey, let's say it doesn't really work out like it's supposed to. Take half that number and tell me that you couldn't afford the services for $400 and some thousand dollars as opposed to the 25,000 we're getting right now. It's a pretty large number.
I mean, I get what you're saying, just please understand, I would just want to make sure that we're not overcrowding our schools, that we don't, that we come back in five, 10 years, okay, well, this, this school cannot hold this amount of students, we don't have enough building maintenance. I just want to know what the plan is if it takes a different.
Well, that, that was addressed, you know, when Mayor Day was here. I mean, these aren't single-family homes, you know, these are multifamily projects, so these are, you know, some of these projects have been proposed are student housing projects, some are, you know, most apartment dwellers in the city are younger population. In fact, it was stated, there wasn't one single rental apartment in the city of downtown Salisbury, this district right now, that actually has school-aged children. So, you know, these aren't families with school-aged children, I mean, you know, these aren't single-family home developments.
We really can't say that-
Well, the fact we don't have any, you know, we can say, you know, apartments are not typically occupied by families with school-aged children.
Have you been to Moss Hill or any of those places lately and seen how many kids are waiting for the school buses? I mean, their apartments built-
Once again, they don't have a single occupied rental unit in any of the downtown apartments that have school-aged children at this point.
Well, how many downtown apartments do they have?
Mr. Day will have to answer that, it was mine from the city.
Mr. Day also said we were playing with Monopoly money too during that statement that I remember. Well, you know, John, going back to your, your statement about getting tax dollars and it not really costing, I know I've heard what you said before about it, it's actually going to help. If, if that was the case, why haven't we been given large tax breaks to businesses or buildings that's already in Wacomico County? I mean, and help them out, the ones that's already here.
We do, we do. We have the business enterprise zone.
That's the enterprise zone, that's not this. The enterprise zone is different.
Right, but we do that, we do that routinely at these meetings.
Not countywide.
That's a zone. That's right.
Ms. Harley.
But this, this council has approved enterprise zone tax breaks for 20 years, and you've approved every single one of them.
I understand I have, yeah.
You approved every single one of them.
They're not, this isn't, John, this isn't the same. The state, this, this, you have to guarantee employment with the enterprise zone.
Enterprise, two jobs are $50,000 investment.
And you also get half that money back from the state.
Right, but you're still giving tax credits.
We're still giving tax credit, we give tax credits to other people too, we have other things we give tax credit.
Right, so this is somewhat, this isn't that much different, it's just that at this point in time, you know, the city has recommended, they've come up with a project that's for hotels and for multifamilies. They've felt that that's a need and that it could be a real return on the investment for that. And, and I agree with that, I think that that's, it's a very good thing. If you want to see projects or if you want to see the downtown area still bringing in the same returns for the next 20 years, we'll be bringing the same property taxes forever. But if someone comes to you and say, look, if you give us, if you give us an incentive on investments, here's what your average estimated return on that investment will be. And when it's 10 times or 32 times what they're getting, you're getting now, I think it's worth taking that, that shot.
So should we be, would we be satisfied with 10 times?
So should we be, would we be satisfied with 10 times on the investment? I think anybody, anybody on the planet would like 10 times, 10 times investment return, yeah. Because on the Ross, they're guaranteeing a 15% return on their investment. I'm just telling you that what revenue we're collecting now would be tenfold on just a Ross project. It'd be 32-fold on the entire zone. If these were viable projects, they should be able to stand on their own without tax breaks. You know, he's, he's offering a 15% return to his investors, but he's saying he's got to have this tax break to do that. Now, why should the taxpayers foot that bill? Taxpayers are not footing that bill, Joe. That's the biggest misperception that I've seen coming from this table. The taxpayers are not footing that bill. These are incent, these are incentives that are being offered on investments of property, on values of property that we haven't even seen yet. This is only on the improved value of the property. The current tax rate that every property is being taxed by is, stays the same. The base rate does not change. We'll be collecting that forever. The only, the only forgiveness that we're doing is on the increased values. So if the project goes from a million dollars, or if the property goes from a million dollars to $10 million, we're only giving an incentive on that additional 9 million, and we're only doing it for 10 years. So if you look at the long term and you see what the return is, that's what your benefit is. The benefit would be greater if you charged a normal amount of taxes too. And if they were viable projects, he would not need to have tax abatements. The city's already given him plenty of tax abatements, and if that's what they want to do, that's fine, that's their business. Well, that's kind of like the mentality in Washington, Joe. They want to just tax every business as far as they can for every dollar they can squeeze out of. Don't compare us to Washington, please. Well, that's what I'm saying. You're trying to get every tax dollar you can possibly get out of everyone. Incentives are created for government to possibly create economic development for what they see is in the best interest of the public as a whole, and that's what we're trying to do here. And I'm trying to be fair to all the citizens in Wacomico County that's been footing the bill to run this county all these years. Everybody, when they all walk downstairs and walk in there and pay their property tax bills, you know, they're paying the full, full amount. Right, and when this, when, if these projects come to fruition, all those people, their property taxes will be reduced. And you know that, and I know that, because we have a revenue cap. If that's the case, if that's the case, we should reduce taxes on a lot of other buildings and everybody's taxes will go down. I'm talking about this project, Joe. I'm talking about this project. Talking about all of them. All the people coming in and paying their taxes, their taxes will be reduced. And you know that. No, I don't. Because it's a 2%.
It rarely had a comment.
Actually, I have a question. So the enterprise zone was mentioned. With the enterprise zone, that was established and applications get approved by the city as well as the county council. This bill is written where the applications are processed through the finance department. Would they then come before the county council for approval for the individual applications? I mean, I understand the legislation is to create the zone, but, you know, should they then come before the county council? Maybe that's a question for council.
Right, we could, we could put that in if that's what the council wishes. Thoughts? I think the concept.
Very good question, Larry.
The concept right now would be, the application would be approved at the finance department level, but up to the council.
Well, can we, can we ask in the application, because I think with the, when you're talking about the hotels, yes, that is, that's going to bring jobs. Is there, is there a way that we could ask similar to the enterprise zone application is how many jobs do you expect this to bring?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
But that doesn't guarantee anything.
Yeah, it's, absolutely, it's not a guarantee.
Mr. Hastings, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I just want to say a couple times, I think a lot of folks have a lot of misunderstanding about what this is, and I think it's important to understand, this is not a unit of government writing a check to somebody who's a rich developer, like, hey, great, here's a bunch of money to you. This is us opening the door for a process, for, for a corporation to do, you know, for, essentially for a company to do what they do best. We, they, they only, we only win if they win, right? We only get more money in, into the county, which by the way, is mostly, this is a city of Salisbury situation, you know, we can, we could of course extend it out elsewhere, and I think there's been conversation about that, but above all else, this is about heads in beds, right? Getting folks into the downtown redevelopment. And, and the assessed value, which will, the amount of money that will come into the county, which is likely, I mean, at least north of $10 million, at least probably 15 million, that amount of money is only on those, that's, that's an assessment, that's a math equation done on those individual properties. That doesn't include the likely multiplier effect of which the surrounding businesses when, whose property value will then rise also. So, and on top of that, I think it's just always important to say, and as Councilman Ackley just mentioned, you know, the jobs component of this, these will, this will be significant development downtown, which I've been hearing my entire 38 years of my life, we need to get the downtown back. This would be an opportunity for Wacomico County residents who have skills and trades and masonry and electrician, you know, all the rest of those in addition to, you know, even the housing for the folks that would be downtown, you know, with a, with a college. The college has specifically said that they want to be a part of this, and they've intentionally developed downtown. So I want to be clear that this is a, you know, this is something that is currently not, does not go across the entire county. The way that this map is set, where the location would be, that would be in the city of Salisbury. So this is something to support what the city of Salisbury is doing to address their downtown redevelopment, which these properties have not been developed in most my entire life. So I just, I think it's important to bring it back. We don't, we don't know the full understanding of how much money will come in, but if it's a net benefit of, you know, even $10 million or a net benefit in general, that's, that's pretty huge. And, and last thing I'll say is, I say this before, but Horizon is the program the city of Salisbury set up. The H, it's Hotel or Residential Incentive Zone is what it originally started as. But obviously, there aren't much, you know, we don't have to worry about people coming to hotels who have their kids here, you know, they don't, they're not going to be in our school system. This is, uh, this is intentionally about heads in beds, getting people downtown so that that area can, can blossom. And when it does, it'll raise the property values and the benefit for residents across the entire county.
Thank you. And it should be noted that these jobs, construction jobs are only temporary jobs. It will only last as long as the construction's going on. Any more questions or comments?
I do have one.
Mr. Holloway.
Mr. Hastings, you stated at the fire association meeting that the gentleman's already got his money borrowed, is that correct?
I don't know anything about that.
Well, you, no, wait a minute, you said that, you said he had his money. You said that at the fire association meeting that he already had his money borrowed.
No, I think you misunderstood what I was saying.
No, I didn't understand, I didn't misunderstand.
What, what I'm getting at is that what he stated, what he stated when they were here, when, and even actually Mr. Day, Mayor Day mentioned also, financing is not, we don't go to, to the, you know, it's not Hebron Savings Bank that's going to come and support a project that has the ability to do the financing for a project like, like this. They have to go out of town. So they've been going after this for a couple of years now to try to figure out how to get the right financing. So I think that's where the conversation was.
The conversation at the fire association meeting is you said he already had his money borrowed, so he didn't need to borrow anymore.
No, I think you misunderstood what I was saying.
No, I didn't. Larry, you were there.
I thought that's what you said because he asked you about it.
I asked you again.
You repeated.
No, well, only repeating what they had said here was that they've been working on their financing, which is the whole reason why this is even put together, is that the financing, they want to make sure it makes sense.
They didn't say here they had the money. They, they did not say that.
I'm not, I work in conservation, I don't work in this, so that is their area, I can only go off of what they tell me.
But you did make that statement at the fire association meeting.
I appreciate you, thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions or comments on that? Okay, um, thank you, Mr. Posoda, thank you, Mr. Wilbur. Um, we're going to move on to council goals. Does anybody have any update with their goals at this time? I really do appreciate everyone that had a lengthy discussion on our goals and had some great ideas. So I know it's only two weeks in, but do we have an update on the goals?
Well, I am compiling my list of roads. John, don't sneak out that door. Mr. Posoda will be getting it, and I have been asked if the county can earn money by setting up a toll to charge for roller coasters on some of their roads in the county. So anyway, I'll be getting that list to you soon. The other thing, I did have an opportunity to talk to someone today from the liquor board, and they said the revenues were very good, and they were hoping to exceed last year's donation or contribution, it was not a donation to the county. So that's a positive thing, so anyway.
And I think I asked you before, were you planning to set up a road trip like we did before?
I haven't planned on that yet.
You had not planned on that yet? All right, because it was an interesting trip.
Regarding the goals.
Yes, sir.
I don't want to put you on the spot, Ms. Hurley, but is it possible from that work session we had, the, the last time, we can maybe get those kind of organized in a time, and maybe with even a timeframe, you know, I mean, just an estimate, but at least we have something to sort of say, you know, you know, because some of these, some of those we've already talked about before, and we can maybe, you know, try to get them with some, uh, calendar dates around them to some respect, you know, it'd be nice.
Some of them.
But that's okay, I guess I don't want to put you on the spot with that.
Yeah, I have no.
Now that I have.
Some of them are long-term. Ms. Holloway, did you have another comment?
I'm good.
Anyone else?
Yeah, environmental health is what I was looking at, such as trying to get a line on septic systems and inspections and approvals and all that, because we know we've had a history, Joe, we've had a history since 2006 of concerns with, you know, how things are getting done. And we recognize the shortcomings in Wacomico County and the issues that we're facing with the state of Maryland as well. I've had a meeting with Laura Hurley, I mean, excuse me, not with Laura Hurley, because she was there, and Lori Brewster, as well as Dan Mitchell, or, yeah, Dan Mitchell, Williams, I'm sorry, Dan Williams, and who was the acting environmental health director. We met last week for about an hour and a half, and they were very cooperative. I mean, they're, they're very, they also are really trying to get this resolved. Lori brought in a lot of charts and data as far as what their time was when applications and permits were put in, the success rates, you know, in a chronological order, which is very good as well. Also had conversations with the Assistant Secretary of the Maryland Department of the Environment, Suzanne Dorsey. She's been very helpful and met with her more than once. I had more discussions with her today. Where we look to be headed hopefully is that Wacomico County, the council as a body, will be able to meet on a regular basis with the, with the Health Department and the Environmental Services to get a true accounting of how many applications came in, what happened to those, you know, what happened to those applications, how long did it take? And I think that's really what we're looking for as a council, because when the constituents come to us and say, we have a problem on one issue or another, you can say, you can take that directly to these individuals and we can address it. If you have situations where someone comes to you about one specific property on one road, we can address that publicly, which we haven't been, you know, we haven't done that before. I would strongly suggest that there be meetings with these individuals before it comes to the table here. But all being said, that's the direction that we're headed. We have a letter here that I'll, I'll hand out to everyone here, it's a draft. What this entails is simply something that will help and is something that the Maryland Department of the Environment is asking for. It's a letter that simply states that the Wacomico County Council will begin to take stronger oversight on our Health Department and on our Environmental Health Department so that we can have more accountability for the citizens of Wacomico County. You might ask why the purpose of the letter, the purpose of the letter is the fact that these individuals are actually state employees, even though the county pays their salaries.
Right.
They are state employees. So this is a means by which to say, we are formally going to accept that responsibility. We want you to know that, you know, we need that oversight, we think it's necessary.
I agree with you.
Yeah, so this is what's being sent out to Secretary Grumbles. Suzanne Dorsey is fully aware of this. Hopefully, we're not sure whether it can be codified in the delegation agreement for Wacomico County, but at least it's a, it's a good first step.
Yeah, because I, we keep getting bounced around on that topic, and it's going on for several years, so.
Sure.
Thank you for working on that goal. I know it's kind of short notice, two weeks, but I think if we talk about this every week, we're, we're going to get these projects rolling, so I appreciate everything on this. Ms. Hurley, Mr. Cannon reminded me of something. Are we scheduled to meet with any of the secretaries at Mako coming up? I remember seeing an email recently.
Um, there's a elected officials forum that you would have at Mako, but that's the only thing that I'm aware of.
All right, I didn't know if we were set up with any of the secretaries, because at one time, I think it was the Department of Transportation or one of them used to always meet with the counties.
My understanding is that the county executive would meet with the Secretary of Transportation, but council typically does not attend that meeting. There is a transportation meeting held in the fall that council attends to talk about our transportation needs there.
And I think the email I'm thinking of that we just got was saying that the secretary wasn't going to be there, but the deputy secretary was going to be there.
It was an email that circulated that he was not going to be able to attend, yes.
Okay, good. Any more comments? Mr. Davis?
John, when you guys have these meetings, can you talk about, not only the process, but I think Bill brought it up once before, you know, they might use the same process for the whole county, I mean, for the whole state, but like, our soil is totally different than what's on the western shore.
Yes.
So, so them to try to say that we need the same type system that they need on the western shore, you know, I think it's, that's what we, that's what they've got to start looking into, because our soil is different from what's on the western shore, so you know, the system can't, isn't the same, because like, of course, we got sandy soil around here, it's going to drain a lot better down here.
Right.
So I think that's basically a lot what the contractors are looking at, because they're putting up all these mound systems, and sometimes you don't even need them, but they're just saying, we need a mound system because that's what the state's requiring. But that, that's not necessarily meaning that it's required here in Wacomico because of where the soil drains.
Right, and it's a very good point. It can be part of the process. In, in talking to Assistant Secretary Dorsey, that was part of the discussions that we had, and whether or not we couldn't have local consultants, whether we would have actual consultants in the Wacomico County Health Department who specifically would be responsible for handing, handling, handling Wacomico County and then reporting back. Right now, everything is going to one or two individuals only, and we know who they are.
And that's the problem.
Yes, and this would be a possible means by which to localize a little bit more. So you're 100% right, and we're, we're working, trying to work towards that.
And with that, do you know when the next meeting's going to be yet? Did they actually give a date to follow up with this, or?
We haven't yet. The letter is, is the first thing that we want to try to see if we can get this out.
But when we have that next one, like, the other thing I like to talk to them about is, because we don't have to reinvent the wheel. I mean, in fact, I found it really interesting, I had an experience down on Eastern Shore, Virginia, and in Acomet County, you know, they face the same exact thing, but what they do is different from us. They allow for a one-time repair to an existing system. You can repair and upgrade. So you can essentially take your existing system, and they can go back into that same drain field and basically go between the lines and put new lines, and you have to make an upgrade, which is normally, you have to normally do a pump. And if you do that, then you can, you can do that without having to do a total replacement. And, you know, I mean, which I think is a good option.
I think it is.
Especially, especially for replacement systems, which is one of the big things we're facing, as opposed to going straight from that to the mound system, which happens so often.
Which is expensive.
I talked to Lori Brewster the other day, and I've had installers say that they can dig out the current system.
Right.
And backfill it, go deeper, backfill it with good sand and make that system work. You know, some of these systems are making folks take out, and what, what is happening
You know, some of these systems are making folks take out, and what is happening here is you've got older people living in some houses, and they're downsized and moving, and they're selling, and they've been living there by themselves, or just two of them, and, you know, the inspector comes in and says, "Well, you might sell the house to somebody with three kids," and so the system won't work. So they make them do the upgrades. But these installers are saying they can do, they can do basically what Bill was saying, or somewhere along that line, and, and fix the system and make it work as good as new or better. And she said, "Well, it's state regulations won't allow it." So at some point in time, we've got to move beyond the state, or the local state government, and get some action in Annapolis on this thing. What Bill just said about putting the drain field between the other drain fields makes perfect sense. There's another, there's another process that I read about, you've got two kinds of water that goes in a septic system, you've got gray water and black water, it's that stuff that falls out of trees, Josh, you know, we were talking about earlier, but it all goes together. They can, they could also take the gray water, which is your dishwashing liquid, your shower water, whatever, and put it into a separate system, and that would take the load off of the black water tank.
That's right.
That's a system that could be used, that's things they're doing in the country. So there's a lot of things we can look forward to, to try to repair this, but I can tell you, they've got houses in the county right now where they won't let people even put a septic tank in, they're having to pump their tanks every two or three months. And, you know, some of these folks are getting hit with bills, especially they've got trees in their yards, you know, $15,000 and $20,000, and that's, the other thing that the realtors need to remember, and I think most of them are on board with this now, is before people put their houses up for sale, they need to get these properties inspected to make sure they know what's, what they're looking for, you know, are they going to be looking at spending $10,000 or $20,000 before they sell the house, so.
All right, Mr. Cannon, are you looking for a consensus on this letter?
Yes.
Can we take, can we take time to digest it a little bit? Do we have to do this tonight? I'd like to read it over. Or can we get up with Laura?
I would expect you to take time to digest it, I don't think it needs a formal consensus publicly, if you want to share with Laura that it's okay, then I think it'll be all right.
So can we respond to you via email?
Or Laura.
Or to Laura, and get a consensus from everyone?
Yeah, and I'd just make a comment that honestly, Dan and Lori have been absolutely fantastic with this, I met with them Friday for over an hour, almost two hours, and met with them again this morning for another hour, I mean, they're just making themselves completely accessible.
Yeah.
And we can turn this into the same type of meetings we have with the Board of Education, quarterly, you can say, here are our concerns, everything that Bill just shared, and Ernie and Joe just shared, we can do that on a quarterly basis.
Great idea. Thank you for working on this, it's important. Mr. Hastings?
I'll just say that, going off of that, I actually spent some time this afternoon with a constituent who, once again, you know, the amount of constituents that I have that are, you would think that they're in the county, but they're actually not, they're actually not a part of the city, they are, they are on well and septic, and they want to be hooked up to Salisbury sewer and/or water. I've, and same thing with, actually, last week before that, there was another major business in Salisbury that you would have thought is, is a Salisbury hooked up, they're not, they are in the county, so they want to go through the process to do so. On that note, we desperately need, as you all know, we need to get water and sewer master plan, we need to move forward with all the components of that, we actually do have that, I think next month we'll have that in hand.
Yes, hopefully.
Hopefully. But we did actually do some, I did do a little bit of research, and I'm going to try and compile the rest of that, but we talked about the water and sewer authorities, are there other counties? Laura actually reached out to Michael Sanderson, the Executive Director of Maryland Association of Counties, to try to get some understanding, so Hartford County, Washington County, and Calvert, we have some information on, he sent over information on what they do and how they address it, but most likely, we are the only county in the state of Maryland that doesn't have a county-run water or sewer.
I've been saying that for 20 years.
So I think this is going to, once we got, once we get the full plan in head, in hand, we'll actually know then where we can expand. Without a doubt, septic systems are, the state of Maryland has zero desire to continue